We call the meeting of the city council for order. The clock on the wall is a little behind my computer. My computer says it's seven o'clock. If you'd join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation founded, a beautiful, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, we'll start with councilman reports. Councilman Baron Watson, where did you report?
A couple of things. First of all, thank you for your patience with me. I've been was in Georgia for longer than I anticipated, but enjoyed spending the time with my kids and grandkids. Got back with the youngest grandson. I want to give a shout out and thank you to our police department who my three-year-old grandson constantly stalked because we had to see all the police cars and he enjoyed it and they were very patient and kind with us. And our construction people, Aiken Gardner, they're just absolutely fabulous with letting little guys come and look at the site and show them what they're doing and their equipment and stuff. So, thank you very much for for that. Had the opportunity today to attend an event that was really near and dear to my heart. Awafria. Losing my word.
Hall of Fame.
Thank you. Hall of Fame awards. And my father was nominated from the city and I thank you very much for that recognition on his behalf because he really was touched by it. It's a wonderful event, very well attended, lots of really good people there and good people honored. And it was just a really nice thing. Thank you so much. And that's all I have.
Great. Councilor Rowman.
Be a lot shorter than that. We had a meeting, we attended a meeting this week with basically representatives from Luke Air Base regarding a plume and some problems with some of the fire retardants that they use at the base, creating a bit of a, not a bit, I don't want to downplay it, but it does create a plume that needs to be dealt with. I wish I had answers. I wish I had more to say about it, but it is kind of in the in the beginning stages of how we're going to deal with this problem that has been created through the firefighting capabilities of Luke Air Force Base. That's all I got. Thank you.
Councilman Donahue.
Yes, actually Vice Mayor Faith and I attended the Swaggies, which were really awesome. I have to say they figured out a quicker way to get through all the awards, which made it for more fun for everybody. But, oh yeah, excuse me, Paige was there as well and it was it was really fun. I was really happy to go. Also attended what Lisa was mentioning and wow, you know what? You guys, that was a room full of incredible community members, just the power and the the history. It was really, really awesome and I'm glad that they've started that and continued that. But that was a that was a wow moment today in that room, for sure. And then I apologize, Tricia, I missed Oktoberfest, I overscheduled, but I heard awesome things and as usual, well done with that. And that's it. Oh, wait, no. I attended the Wigwam exhibit at the Historical Society, which by the way, is going to be up until next June and it's fabulous. So, they've gone over to the Wigwam and they've actually done training for a lot of the employees as well. But if you get a chance, go up to the Historical Society and see it. It's really cool. So, anyway, that's all.
Great. Council James.
Thank you, Mayor. The preparations are underway for the Patriot of America, which affects obviously the city, key stakeholders in the city, business owners, the resort. Brings great, great publicity to not just the charitable organizations involved with it, but to the city. And so that's expect more news coming out. Thank you to Sunny, who continues to coordinate on behalf of the city for various things. And then just citizen feedback pertaining to recent things that we've done, maybe not so much on the positive side, depending on which sort of the age demographic you run into, pertaining particularly to the speed limit adjustment on Camelback. I would say that, and I look forward to the to the report tonight, I saw the numbers. The the nice thing is people are not going 75 on Camelback anymore. It's probably more like 50 or 55. I would tell you, if you get on Camelback and you drive 35, have your head on a swivel because you're going to get run down. So, it's you know, when when people come up and say, well, how the heck would city council, why would you do that? And you try to explain to them, hey, there's eventually going to be a stoplight there. There's going to be some roundabouts coming on. We're trying to, oh, that makes sense. So, but just just surprisingly aggressive feedback dissent towards that change would be the only thing I'd add. That's it.
Thank you. Councilor Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I've also had comments about some of the aggressiveness on Camelback and on Litchfield Road. But I have noticed that on Litchfield Road, the traffic has slowed down significantly. So, that's kind of cool. And I want to congratulate Dr. Brainard and his family. I mean, their involvement in the community has been forever and it's been fantastic. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Councilman Claire, do you have anything you'd like to report on?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I just want to hit on a couple of things. I want to join the Vice Mayor with the comment about your father and him being a very appropriate person to honor with that Hall of Fame award. He has done a lot for our community and a lot for a whole variety of members within the community. So, we all appreciate him, the years that he's spent here and his impacts on the community. Also, the PFOS, the PFOS meeting was the first one of our meetings on PFOS. There will be additional meetings with the Air Force and with Liberty Water to make sure that our community stays safe and that Liberty particularly is taking the steps that it needs to take to ensure that our water falls below the upcoming EPA guidelines for community drinking water. Oktoberfest, Tricia, you guys, you did a great job. It was some of the best food that I think that I've that I've had at, excuse me, had at Oktoberfest. And it was a lot shorter lines. However, I'm going to, I've asked the city manager and I'm sure he will talk with you about getting your group together and doing an after-event review and to take a look at whether we have other options going forward next year and to do it early enough that we have time to, if we decide to try to pursue a different option, that we have time to secure a ban and we obviously need to work through and communicate with Wigwam. Because the event really has gotten too pricey, I think, and it's, it needs to be more focused on families. I guess that's all of my comments for tonight. So, thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report on current events?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You guys hear me? Try this one. You guys can hear me? We'll try it, but we'll try it with this one then. Several things to report tonight. Mayor, Council, I'm sure you've noticed the speed bumps on Bird Lane were removed. We did get a lot of questions from the public, particularly why we removed those. They were put in there originally for speeding and of course, that still happens. But the reason they were taken out was because those of you that are very familiar with Bird Lane, Bird Lane was built before stormwater existed. And when we get heavy rains and monsoon season, parts of Bird Lane would flood and it would flood surrounding yards because the speed bumps kind of made a pool in those areas. And for those reasons, we did remove those speed bumps and we are going to be putting a different kind of speed bumps back in that'll be the bolt-in type that Public Works can take in, put in, put out. So, there will be speed bumps put back in there, but they will be a different type. Also, we are going to be doing a stormwater study on Bird Lane to see what it will take to fix Bird Lane and eventually do a stormwater project on Bird Lane like we did in downtown Litchfield recently. But of course, it takes years to do a study like that. It'll be a big project when it's done, but it's like anything else, we will get there. So, that's why those speed bumps were taken out. Staff continues to coordinate with Church at Litchfield Park to make way for the rest of Village Parkway. If you're very familiar with the church parking lot, that south driveway there that comes into what will be Village Parkway will be permanently closed. And we will also be moving that mailbox that's there on the south side of the church. And that will be the last piece of Village Parkway to be built between Old Litchfield Road and Desert. I'm sure many of you have received your mail-in ballots for the Charter City election. I know I got mine this past Saturday and we both voted in the elections. So, people are receiving those now. We are getting questions about our Charter City, about our freeholder candidates. For those of you that don't know, we have 18 people that are running to be part of our freeholders. Those are our Charter City Committee. We have 18 people running for 14 seats. So, we ask please pay attention to that election. It is coming up soon. We are putting out a survey on Camelback Park Wall and Parking Lot. There'll be a public meeting on November the 13th. That's a public input meeting. We invite you to come to that. That will be about the replacement wall at Camelback Park and also the parking lot that we're going to build at Camelback Park. You may remember, we had done a basic design of that before and what we didn't realize was the airline canal that's underneath Camelback Park is naturally right where the parking lot was going to be. So, we had to move the parking lot a little bit, design a little bit, and that's okay. But again, that public input meeting will be on Monday, November the 13th at six o'clock at St. Peter's. We invite you to that. We did send postcards to residents that live within a certain distance of Camelback Park and of course, we're advertising online as well. Staff continues to work with Aiken Gardner to cut costs on Litchfield Square. We will be planning to bring the final GMP, that's GMP 6, to council in November. Mayor, Council, that's everything I had. There will be some upcoming meetings, as the mayor said. We've asked Liberty to do a public meeting about PFOS and PFOS. They will be doing that soon. And there will be another meeting coming up by another agency to be announced shortly. I welcome any questions if there are any at this time.
I know I mentioned this the other night, but with two Liberty meetings, we better be really clear as to which topics are which, you know. I think that one will be heavily attended and the other one maybe not so much. But I'm just a little concerned about that, that we've got to be really clear. The P5 meeting isn't going to be issues on water pressure and so forth. So.
And we have talked with Liberty about that exact concern, that the PFOS meeting will be just be about PFOS. It will not be about water pressure. So, that's important because we've got to keep those issues separate. They're two different things. Thank you, Councilor Donahue.
Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to item five on our agenda, which responds to the last meeting. It's called the Community. Last meeting, Mr. Mahoney stated, stated a number of things, but the main thing that he stated for which there is a response is that he's concerned that the vegetation and trees and the islands near his businesses are not looking as good as he'd like to see. The response is Public Works has worked throughout the summer with twin challenges of a lack of water pressure and the temperatures. We have many trees in our community, not just in the downtown area, but throughout the community that are quite old. And so, Public Works has spent a lot of time trying to save those trees and prevent as many as possible from dying or at least becoming distressed because of the heat and in some cases, lack of water. This is an ongoing effort throughout the city. Public Works has already started removing a variety of trees that have either died or are so distressed that they need to be removed. And that that includes any trees that are particularly in trouble in the business district, but also throughout the city. Council Mahoney should be aware, and if he's not, I want to try to make him aware that one part of the whole plan for Litchfield Square, one piece of it was to include in the in the in the plan, a revitalization of the downtown area, new electrical service, new streetlights and new landscaping and islands. There is $330,000 in our budget actually to do that. And that will be done towards the end of the GMP 6 work that's being done on Litchfield Square. This will make the current downtown area consistent with Litchfield Square so that it does not appear to be a separate area. It appears to be part of one downtown, one downtown. We have already built or rebuilt Honeysuckle Road, including a new road, curb, sidewalks, parking, and we're finishing ADA ramps, all of which is, all of which is impacting a positive way of downtown businesses. We've also hired the same company that does Glendale, Glendale's Christmas lights to do our Christmas lights this year. That's at a cost to the city of almost $50,000. We hope the city will shine, the downtown area will shine because of this investment. All these things are done to make the downtown area be something that everyone here can be proud of. In terms of traffic was the other thing that he mentioned. Traffic is a problem throughout the valley. I was actually quite surprised today when I was in an area on Litchfield Road, south of, south of I-10, that the traffic getting on I-10, I don't know, 2:30 in the afternoon, was backed up for more than a mile, lined up just to get on I-10. And that that kind of traffic problem, we have done as much as we could, as we can to try to plan the movement of traffic in Litchfield Square so that it does not, we don't see those kinds of backups. But additional traffic around Litchfield Square is certainly going to be a feature that we're all going to have to have to deal with and get used to. I think that answers all of the substantive points of Mr. Mahoney's response or his call, his his statement in the Call of the Community last, last meeting. That brings us to this meeting's Call of the Community.
I was on, I signed up to.
Brings us to this items, this this time's Call of the Community. You will be given an opportunity to speak under Call of the Community, since that's what you want to speak about.
I want to speak about what you just talked about. I wanted to.
You, and you're welcome to do that under, under the same guidelines that we're going to deal with all, with with this as Call of the Community item. If you have additional things you want to state, you're welcome to state them.
And I want to speak.
There will be a reply next, at the next meeting.
No, I want to speak under number five. It's on the agenda. My name's on there. I have a right to speak on the number five. I was like counsel for 20 years. I know how the gate works.
Okay, the gate does allow, if you want to speak on number five and be the first one, you know, so that you're not second to speak. If you'd like to be the first speaker, that's fine. But again, it's going to be held under the same rules that we have for a every Call of the Community comment in which you can make your comments and then there will be a response at the next meeting. So, would you like to make comments now?
I would, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Please do so.
In 20 years on the council, that has never been the case. When you, can I finish, sir?
Twenty years, I've never seen a citizen ever come in and ask to speak on a response to the Call of the Community. It was, this is the first I've ever seen it.
Well, it is agendized for me to speak.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so I'm correct. Thank you. So, here's the situation, Mr. Mayor, in council. And thank you for being here. My comments was not a negative thing towards Public Works. Two and a half, three years ago, I met with members of the city and council about the downtown, how it looked and the lights. Five trees are lit up, seven are not. The five that are lit up lights, I mentioned the last meeting, are shooting different directions down this way and everywhere. I was told that they were going to replace the entire electrical system down there because it could not handle the proper lighting. It was in the budget over two years ago and it has not been done. So, that's one of my points. Yes, the downtown grass is nutgrass and weeds and some Bermuda. You drive by the new Village Center, which will not have any businesses in for at least a couple of years, it appears to me, has the most beautiful-looking islands you've ever seen. It's very frustrating because another point is that I don't think, well, let me go back. I didn't even know about, I kind of knew about the $50,000 for downtown lights for Christmas. I still don't know how we're going to be able to do that if they haven't rebuilt the electrical system down there. First. Secondly, nobody has ever mentioned to me what you just mentioned about redoing the downtown to match the new Village Square. Never heard that. I knew a new light was being put next to Papa Paul's. That's the only thing I've ever heard. So, the communication from the city to the downtown businesses is not very good. I'll be honest. I find out things from Aiken Gardner people that I found out later on is not correct. I talk to them every day about what's going on. I was told last week by one of the foremen that the entire northbound and southbound lanes were going to be redone. I go, really? I had no idea. Turns out, it's not. It's just that one area by Honeysuckle. The frustration is, and I should go back also, you mentioned the traffic. I brought up, and you failed to mention this, that I'm frustrated because you're going to force all traffic out of Village Square to go southbound so they can't go northbound because you don't want to bother the residents on Old Litchfield Road and Bird Lane and others. But I believe that it's going to cause so many backups, having people who don't know how to parallel park, that you're going to have 10, 15, 20 cars coming out and backing up. It is going to be very difficult. It's going to frustrate customers and I'm afraid we're going to lose business over it. I don't understand why people are going to be forced to go down southbound only. And I want to find out, has there been a traffic study done on this to see what the expectation is? Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get to the, we'll answer your comments at our next meeting. The other request to speak is from Mr. Carter Wilson.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, I want to first thank you for the opportunity to meet with the Air Force and a number of you Monday about their plume. It was very interesting. But I think as most of you felt, I felt the same way, that I came away with a lot more questions than answers. And I hope that the council will move expeditiously toward allowing those additional wells in Litchfield Park so that we can have some idea of what's going on with those chemicals. The other thing that I wanted to thank you about was the traffic and the speed signs. As some of you have already noted, the traffic on Litchfield Road and Camelback has been reduced. Although I must say that we still have more than our share of NASCAR wannabes. I don't know what the answer is, but one of the things that's come to my attention is that we have a 35 mile an hour sign right at Wigwam. The next one is down at the golf course underpass. The next one is all the way up at Camelback. That's going northbound. Southbound, there's one at Camelback. Then there's another one at the roundabout. If you're coming out of Litchfield Greens, either direction, there's no speed limit signs. And I would encourage the department to to consider additional speed zone, speed limit signs somewhere. And Camelback's the same way. It wouldn't hurt us to have a couple more signs out there. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments. We will have responses at our next meeting. Next time on the agenda is presentations. We have a production of new employees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, Council, it's been a while since we've introduced new employees to you. These are employees we have added since May of this year. There's several of them here and a lot of them are actually here tonight. So, if you guys will please stand as I call your name and then we'll give you an applause once you're all standing, please. Monica, Joel, Lorena, Roberto and Eric. Everybody? And last but not least is Lisa. Stand up, please. Thank you, guys. I did ask Lisa if she would come up and give herself a brief introduction. Lisa is our new HR director. She's on her second week with us. So, this feed come up, please. Thank you.
Eric, did you pick the yard of the quarter? Bring it back. Does that sound on the item next, the yard of the quarter? It'd be nice to have a guest. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. I'm very pleased to be the new Human Resources Director here in Litchfield Park. I've been a resident for over 20 years, raised all my children here. They went to elementary schools, high schools, middle school. So, it's very nice to work in the city where I live. So, I'm very pleased to be here. I come here from after 15, close to 15 years working at the city of Goodyear in Human Resources. I had an opportunity to leave there and go to work for U-Haul International. So, got a lot of international experience in Human Resources because you're in the US as well as Canada. And then I left U-Haul with another opportunity to work for somewhat of a startup company, Fleet Genius, where I was their director as well. And gave me a lot of experience there because they dealt with acquisitions. They were a fast-growing company through acquisitions. So, dealt with a lot of mergers, acquisitions and wonderful things as well. So, happy to be here. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Had the pleasure of meeting Lisa last week and invited her to the team. I think she's going to be a great addition. Exactly. Keep it all in the family, so to speak. All right. Next item on their agenda is awarding the Yard of the Quarter. The Yard of the Quarter recipients are Harry and Pat Ealing. Unfortunately, they had to be out of town, out of town and they can't be here. So, they asked their landscaper, who's responsible for their beautiful yard, to come here and accept this award on their behalf. It is awesome. And we, we have an unusual situation in which we have the chairman of the Recreation and Public Grounds Committee here, who is the committee that chooses the Yard of the Quarter. So, we're going to ask Anthony, today, to help in giving this award to Roberto. So, if you both would step up here, I'd appreciate it. Roberto? Let's see. Take me with a certificate. They're in the pictures, I can see. Perfect. Do great work. Thank you. Thank you. Push for a picture or two here.
Mayor, can I just echo your comments? We appreciate the work that contractors like you do to keep our community looking beautiful. And thank you very much.
Your comments from council. All right, seeing none, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is one of my favorite items. It is awarding the Employee of the Quarter. Employee of the Quarter is an employee that's chosen by the non-management employees as the most impactful employee for the other employees, the most important employee to the others throughout the quarter. It used to be that we would do something like, did I make a mistake? No, it's all right, Eric. I was just commenting. Well, since we only have one attorney, you would get the award every quarter. So, we used to, we used to give gift certificates and things, try to personalize the gift a little bit. And I don't know, I don't know if the employees all voted on this and just made this different or if it just, it just happened. But now what we give is a day off, as I understand. So, this year, this quarter is Elise Harriet. Elise, I have. Thank you for the work. Appreciate it. Although I think everybody has to say, you know, the rule is if you leave before the business is done, we don't detect your car out of the parking lot, so you may not find it. Anyone who's come for an award, for an award or for just to see the first few minutes of our meeting, you're welcome to leave at any time, feel like it. I think if you can go to.
Actually, Mayor, she already left, but Elise is one of our own, having grown up, Elise is one of our, she grew up at the Litchfield Elementary District and did the whole, yeah. So, she left already, but yay her. Elise, Elise is one of our own, as I say, we raised her. She went to, yes, she went to Litchfield Elementary. She's.
All right, we're going to move on to our report. Now that the meeting is totally disrupted, we'll get it back on track with the report from the Goodyear Fire Department. It says here on my, on my agenda that we actually have the chief here today.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Good, good to see you, Chief Louisiana.
Good to see you guys as well. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we'll review the calls for service for the month of September. So during that time, we had sixty-eight calls for service, just up slightly from last year's calls for service. On a breakdown, so you have about fifty-six that were EMS-related, so about eighty-two percent, which is pretty standard for your city. And then we had eleven or sixteen percent at Las Cruces, and then six or eight percent at La Loma. So we continue to work with both of those facilities on a monthly basis, and certainly recognize them for when they're making good decisions for their patients, but also times when they're not using the system appropriately. So they've been great partners during this process, and so we've enjoyed working with them. That's the end of our report, I'll be here for any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Questions for council? All right, you guys are doing a great job, we appreciate your service.
And I do want to put a good word in for Lisa, but she left already, so I guess I don't have to anymore. But she, she was excellent to work with. I've known Lisa for a long time, but she was a great partner for us in the city. And I think you'll enjoy her and certainly her experience, so.
Now that you've stayed around for, you know, a gratuitous comment like this, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor has now come up with a comment, so.
Well, yeah, but it's not directed to you really, it's directed to staff. Yeah, you know, I've been on my soapbox over the years with the concerns about the growing, as I view it, our city citizens underwriting, underwriting the business plan of a couple of our local businesses that would make up twenty-four percent of our calls this month. We have an agreement with one of those businesses. It would be nice to know where we stand with that, that if all these additional calls that we're now absorbing as they increase are falling under that agreement, or whether they're not. So maybe at a meeting or two after this, maybe just a brief thing, or maybe a written report to the council, or in your manager's report, or something maybe at some point.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, we're sort of looking at that and get back with you on that.
We'd be willing to assist however we can in that as well.
Yeah, you do a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, now our report from the Avenue Police Department, Assistant Chief Martin.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, you just get the Assistant Chief today, not the regular Chief. Apologize about that. Good evening, everybody. Reporting on the statistics from September of this year. It was relatively a quiet, nice month of September. We added an increase of calls for service total, up roughly about sixty calls. We attributed most of those to traffic stops. With the change of the traffic, speed signs on Camelback and on Litchfield Road, we've increased our traffic subs tremendously. So I'm really going to touch base on that part of the stats for you guys. I think that's most important. If you have any questions about anything else, let me know, and I'll feel free to ask or answer those for you. So in the month of, when we started, so September fifteenth is when we started enforcing the traffic reduction from thirty-five miles an hour. From September fourteenth to as of yesterday, we had a hundred and eighty-eight traffic stops. Hundred and twenty-nine of those traffic stops were on Litchfield and Camelback Road. I'm sorry, a hundred and sixty-three of those traffic stops were on Litchfield and Camelback Road. So you can see eighty-seven percent of the increase in traffic stops is focused on Litchfield and Camelback Road, which is what we need to focus on primarily. Of those traffic stops, we've issued thirty-four citations, and we also issued, I apologize, let me see here. I have my notes backwards. We issued a hundred and eighteen warnings. Where of those vehicles, too, eight of those were trucks over the weight limit that should not be on Camelback and Litchfield Road. We have an issue with the GPSs, and we've actually checked it out with our own phones, our own officers, that shows the speed limit that's still on Litchfield Road, what it used to be. And then the trucks that we've stopped, they're GPSs that are given the route, is given on the route to take Litchfield Road still. So we advise them to let their companies know, and we're working with Google to try to get that fixed. And we hadn't heard back from them as of yet, to see when we can get those Google Maps and on your phones, on your vehicles changed. So it gives you the correct route to go down for trucks, and then the correct speed for vehicles. So we're working on that, hopefully I can have an update for you next month, and see where we're at with that. Again, we have also, we've been told recently that there's an increase of road rage and issues, and I heard from some of the folks here of the speeders going down Camelback Road and Litchfield Road, correct? We had four calls for service in the month of September that referenced either speeding vehicles or aggressive driving, people that are driving aggressively down roads. All four of those vehicles, we were unable to find them by the time the resident calls us. We get out there, they're long gone. But we have increased our presence along Camelback Road. Officer Cronin here works also that this evening, and he spends a lot of his time on Camelback Road, where Bird Lane comes out. So again, we're increasing our presence along those roadways, and we'll keep at it. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
You mentioned trucks overweight, did you mean over speed?
No, so the commercial truck vehicles are not allowed to use Litchfield Road, you know, the big semi trucks, so those vehicles also. We're still, we're several months back, and maybe last year, we had a big problem with the trucks coming down our Litchfield Road to go to the businesses and bypass, when they're primarily supposed to use the Dicer Road as for commercial vehicles. So we've had those eight vehicles still, which is a huge reduction from what it used to be.
Yeah, that's fantastic, okay. The GPS in my vehicles has changed.
Has it?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Which I found surprising, I'm not sure where it gets the information, whether it's over the internet, or whether the camera reads the signs, or where it comes from. But I was surprised to see that pretty quickly.
That's good.
In mine. And then I guess we've got the flashing signs, speed limit signs coming relatively quick, which might take some of the burden off the police department, and road rage may go down a little bit, maybe. Yeah, the flashing yield for the roundabout and flashing speed for the Camelback and. There's only two, or correct? Or there four? Okay, so we're going to put them on each end of Camelback and each end of Litchfield Road?
These are the speed limit signs? You have two now, why don't we get them out? Counselor James.
Correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We've actually, we've actually had conversations about that, staff. And at this point, it is possible, and we have had some golf carts on Litchfield Road. I don't know many on Camelback yet, but we've had some. At this point, it hasn't been a problem yet. So until we actually have a problem, we're not going to respond to something that we just, you know, we don't know. In kind of a cop sort of way, having the golf carts out there might slow everything down, which is good, that's what we're trying to get to, so. Let's say. We may have to have hazard duty pay for the drivers of the golf carts.
That would be the mayor's new job.
It's a little dangerous. But I, you know, I have been on both Camelback and Litchfield, and both of them are noticeably slower. I spend more time, it seems like, on Litchfield Road, and it's really improved tremendously. To the, you know, to the point where it's actually, you're actually able to get out on Bird Lane and Litchfield Road, you can get out in a safe manner now. It's not a, not a matter of point and shoot and close your eyes, so. Yeah, and there's less, well, and I think there's less traffic. I think people are moving over to Dicer because they don't want to go thirty-five. And so we're getting less traffic on the road, too. But for whatever reason, it's, it's much improved from what it was. Just, you might let your officers know that the preliminary, the preliminary information that we've gotten on the truck study is that particularly very early in the morning, like four, four or five, four or five or six AM, one of the largest contributors to noise for our residents is speeding trucks on Camelback. And it's cement trucks specifically.
Okay.
We need to start watching that closely, because that, that's a huge concern for those residents.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, we'll definitely get on that for you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Counselor James, just to point out that. We're talking about, I think he's running tickets for trucks, any kind of big, big truck on Litchfield Road. Litchfield Road is not, you're not allowed there. Camelback, we have not been able to enforce our restriction on Camelback.
Yes, Counselor, my apologies, I was referring to Litchfield Road for the commercial vehicles. Yes, on Camelback Road, they're still loud, and then engine brakes and makes it louder, but.
Engine brakes are not allowed to do.
No.
But if we can get them slowed down, we can help, we can help some of the noise problems.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Please take it back to your officers, they apparently are doing a phenomenal job. I have yet to have one complaint about an attitude or an officer doing their job that has been astonishing.
Appreciate it, Vice Mayor.
And they've had a lot of compliments on the officers doing their job. Showing up timely and being, you know, being seen, and. Yes, it is, you know, our movement to your police department has been a great benefit to our citizens.
Well, thank you, I'll pass it along for sure.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor, thank you, Counselor.
Your officers are safe, safe.
Yes, sir.
That takes us to our monthly staff reports, first reporter is from Finance Department, Ms. Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight's report is a finance report through September. We'll start with our sales tax. Our retail sales had another good month, eight percent over last September. Online sales were up seventeen percent. Our restaurant and bars did see a decline of nine percent. Utilities up forty-five, and then rentals, huge increase of three hundred and twelve percent. However, we did receive one large commercial payment of about a hundred and twenty-six thousand that I'm just not convinced belongs to us. We have reached out to this business to try to get clarification. I went ahead and left it just in case it does belong to us, but that correction might be made. So if indeed that does belong to us, we're up twenty-three percent over last September. If we have to refund that, it's an actual increase of six percent over last September. Year over year, we're up seventeen percent. And then our construction sales tax is up a hundred and thirty percent over September of last year. Year over year, down seventeen percent. Before I move on to the full report, are there any questions on sales tax? It's a commercial rental, so that's why I don't think it, unless somebody has back paying several months. So the report that we get doesn't give us any details, all it gives us is just the name and the amount. And so that's why we have reached out. It's not even an in-state company. Yes, that was last month. It was the same type of situation where we had, a business had paid to us, but it actually belonged to another city. Unfortunately, it was one that we just didn't catch. And the Department of Revenue will assess us interest because we were, we had money that didn't belong to us. But that refund has already been done. Or are you able to zoom that in a little bit? So for our general fund revenues, we're at twenty-five percent of the year, and through the end of September, we've collected just under four million dollars. So our revenues are at twenty-six percent of budget. I think everything is about right on track where it should be. I do want to point out our interest income, we've already earned almost three hundred and fifty thousand. The quarter earnings are at just over five percent. Expenses by department, overall, we're at just under two point seven million or twenty-one percent. Some departments are over twenty-five percent, but there are some bigger payments that come in at the beginning of the year that should smooth out. And then the debt service payments, those are just paid twice a year. And we'll pay that in December and then in June. So those will catch up as the year goes on. So that gives us a net general fund operations of, our revenues have exceeded expenses by one point three million. Our one-time sources, our construction sales tax is right at three hundred thousand, and we've spent just under a hundred and twenty-six thousand on capital. This brings our ending fund balance to twenty-seven point four million. The next few pages are the details in recreation services and special events. I won't go through those unless, because the detail is in your packet, but I can't answer any questions at the end if there are any.
Question? I know that, well, I don't know this. This is, is there any reason why you can't put in a monthly accrual on debt service so we can see the impact?
We can.
That would be good, because I'm assuming this is about four hundred thousand. Expense that should be there, but is.
Yes, I can do that. And we'll move on to our special revenue funds, if you can go down a couple pages, please. Oh, I'm sorry, I can, I forgot, I can control that.
Pissing yourself to move it?
Yeah. Give myself that reminder. And then Maria zooms in. We will get this new system figured out. Our HERF revenue, we've collected just over a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We are two percent under budget, so the state estimate that they gave us over the summer could have been a little bit high. This fund also accrues interest, so total HERF revenue is a hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred. We haven't started any HERF projects yet. Keith can elaborate on that in his update if there's any questions about upcoming projects. That leaves us with the ending fund balance of nine hundred and sixty-two thousand in the HERF fund. For our Litchfield Square Capital Project, the bond proceeds of eleven point five million will be what we use this year to cover Litchfield Square expenses. Through the end of September, we've paid invoices of just under one million dollars. Of course, other expenses have accrued, but this is as far as we got through the end of September. So that leaves ten point five million in that fund. And then the streetlight improvement districts, that revenue is starting to come in. We've collected just over thirty-seven thousand, expenditures are just over fifty-six thousand, so this fund is upside down nineteen thousand, but that will smooth out once property tax collections start to come in. And there is a cushion in those funds, so the ending fund balance in the SLID fund is just a negative, just fourteen hundred dollars. just on a negative, just fourteen hundred dollars, but again, that will smooth out when property tax revenues start to come in. And that brings us to our total fund balance page. So a- again, the general fund has an ending fund balance of twenty-seven point four million, but just, um, please keep in mind that things that will impact that, uh, there is three point five million dollars that we received from Maricopa County for Camelback Road that's included in there. And then we also have some future potential expenses such as the sun health restoration of nine hundred thousand. And there will be ten million of sitter reserves to complete Litchfield Square that will be spent, um, next year. And grand total with all funds, um, just under thirty-nine million. And that ends my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Mr. Vice Mayor.
Paige. In my twenty years of looking at all these and watching how the commercial has developed and the city has developed and, uh, the foresight of our first council that tried to figure out how to make this city sustainable. The last five years or so, you know, we, sustainability has become amazing, what's been happening. Do you have already created without going to any extra work, something that would show maybe the revenues and expenses for the, each of the years for the last some number of years? So we can kind of see what's, the, the general trends are and, and how they're going. I don't want a, a lot of work than this, but I've got just, I, I think I, I have a grasp of it. But I think it'd be pretty important to, to, to know that we're we, we've got something sustainable and what we're doing with spending, because every time we see this money, all these projects start filtering to the top. Like that little better idea.
Sure.
Kind of how we're trending.
Um, Mayor and Vice Mayor, I, I do have that detail and something that I keep a close eye on are our top ten taxpayers, because our top ten really, um, bring in the most sales tax revenue. Of course, all the others make up a big amount of that too, but I can put something together that without disclosing taxpayer information, but something that would, can show you what those trends are based on our, our local.
I don't know if it needs to be broken down to the top ten or anything. I'm just, you know, just the, the general overall. I think I've got a good feeling, but I don't know what that's what, what that spread is. I know during the O eight recession, that could be very, very meager. We weren't overseeing, we weren't cutting expenses, we weren't replacing employees. So, I mean, it's going to be some dips in there. Uh, but, and it dipped so that our income, our revenues did not exceed income, so we, we kept it balanced. And looking at, maybe we're going to go through someday somewhere, maybe something like that again, we need to keep that in mind. And so I just would like a little better feeling, I guess, for not the individual taxpayers, but kind of where the revenues and expenses have been and, and what the spread is. You know, and if it's, if it's a sustainable spread or whether we're creating expenses that may at some point, um, come back in hurt us.
Okay, I, I, I think I understand what you're looking for. I can put some graphs together.
Put that together probably before we start looking at the spread. We should, we should put into that analysis also the impact that also put in the impact that produced.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you.
Questions?
Remind me again, is the HERF funding, use it or lose it?
No.
It go, it carries over?
It carries over.
Alright. Every year, there's no end.
It stays. It's like a pot.
It's what?
Pot.
Oh.
Pot gets full and, or the pot gets empty. Pot stays. We, we had set a goal to spend this, that pot, because that pot was over, way over a million dollars, almost a million dollars. We set a goal a couple of years ago, spend that pot down. Anything to do with roads. Okay, so we're done with finance. We'll go on to Capitol.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, start with an update on some miscellaneous items that have been going on. Southwest Valley Truck Study, we still don't have the draft study from, uh, MAG yet. Uh, they have told me it should happen within this week, but the staff of their design team is working on some of those remedial efforts and putting a, a rough order magnitude of costs, what it would take to reduce the noise and vibration impacts on the kind of a increasing schedule. So say a wall is at the top and then the bottom would be something like replacing pavement, adjusting GPS, as the officers mentioned, uh, to avoid trucks on Camelback. So it's varying remedial efforts that they're working on. And they're tailoring it specific to our community. Uh, some other miscellaneous items, uh, unfortunately Liberty Utilities had a couple of blowouts on water and sewer, uh, that have had to be repaired. Vienna Way and Bird had a water service that blew out and Liberty, over the last two and a half weeks, was unable to isolate valves to shut it down, so it actually continued to leak. That's why we couldn't final pave it. However, yesterday, they started working on the final effort and it looks like they should be paving it either today or tomorrow. I got it. Laguna Drive had a sewer repair, uh, that was the contractor that was hired. They went out and just saw cut our road without, uh, informing anybody and then Liberty came along and discovered that, kicked them off the job. Unfortunately, we're, uh, able to make that repair, uh, through Liberty's contractor. The Child Road, uh, accident repairs, you might have seen northbound and southbound at the roundabout had traffic control the last couple of days. That was for the repairs from back in April and May of last year. And while they were at the repairs, there was a recent accident Tuesday morning, uh, at one AM. Where a car, um, southbound flew through the, uh, Gabian walls and onto the, the contractor's yard, actually. Um, that, the, the damages for that while a contractor was out there making our other repairs, we actually told him to make the repairs of this recent accident. So we're going to have a squeaky clean roundabout in the next day, um, free of all accident damage. I would like to point out that, uh, every accident that has happened on the roundabout has been single car, uh, which is, uh, a very beneficial aspect of the roundabouts. Camelback, uh, moving on to CIP Projects, Camelback Parking Lot and, uh, Camelback Park perimeter wall are both under design efforts and survey is complete and preliminary layouts are being completed. As, uh, Matthew mentioned, on Monday, November thirteenth, we'll have a public meeting. We'll present option, well, we'll present alternatives and image and graphical images to the public, um, open it for feedback and, and collect survey information. Uh, both prod, uh, so Camelback Parking Lot is being funded under the remaining ARP funds, uh, which is approximately two hundred and eighty thousand, I believe, Paige. Um, with, that'll cover construction design of the Camelback Parking Lot. Uh, Camelback, uh, Park perimeter wall is estimated at, uh, one point two million. Uh, design, uh, design portion has a hundred thousand, one point one million, uh, for construction. Um, and that is being funded out of, uh, general funds. Public Works Facility, uh, preliminary design efforts are underway with, uh, uh, architect. In the general fund, the overall construction budget is two point two five million as listed, but, uh, it is our goal to reduce that cost. Uh, currently, we're working with the architect on final layouts of the site plan to, uh, uh, generate a rough order magnitude cost and then present it to council. That should happen, uh, if that doesn't happen by the end of December, it'll happen early, uh, in January. Uh, as mentioned before, uh, flashing stop signs and the yield signs are going to arrive, uh, they'll arrive on the sixteenth. I was talking to Public Works, it, after that, it'll be one, two weeks before they're installed. So before we reach December or in the early part of December, we should have flashing yield signs of the roundabout and flashing stop signs, uh, right here at the circle. Uh, the two flashing speed limit signs, uh, are going to be installed along with those solar powered yield and stop signs. And with that, that is, uh, my update for Capitol Projects. Take any questions.
One of the things that was discussed that I think you was, I don't know, but the manager was doing a survey of our speed limit signs as they exist today, so we could understand how many signs we have and where they're at. When it comes to Litchfield Road and Camelback, because it, Litchfield Road, it's, if you don't know what the speed limit is on Litchfield, you can't figure it out. It's, it's weird, it's way it happened. So we need to understand how many of these flashing signs do you have and where are you going to put them? And how are we going to get other signs in there that just alert people what the speed limit really is? It's a really big, it's big, that's a big portion. Litchfield for sure, but I bet it's a big.
Uh, actually, uh, Mayor, I did neglect to, uh, add an update on speed limit signs. I apologize. Talking to Kyle and Public Works, uh, Public Works is actually going to install an additional seven speed limit signs in various kind of the locations you mentioned. One of our goals is to, anywhere that there's a raised median, to have a speed limit sign placed in the median and on the outside. I've found that actually after driving on Camelback in parts of Litchfield, when you're paralleling another vehicle or from Camelback, you're paralleling a truck, you cannot see the speed limit signs. So this will increase the visibility of that. So as of right now, it's a seven additional and we'll put some just south of the exit driveway on CVS. Uh, another one, uh, as Carter mentioned, uh, on the south side of, um, of the exit to, from the Greens onto Litchfield Road. And then we also noticed that there's a few locations on the east side of Litchfield Road on Camelback that would benefit from just having an additional speed limit notification sign.
Alright, good.
Thank you. When we had the MAG hearing or hearings, the, we were told very definitely that MAG was going to make no recommendations as to what should be done on Camelback. I, am, am I hearing from you that you're expecting the report to come back with recommendations or just alternatives or something changed?
Um, it, it might be more in the language, so, uh, an alternative or a recommendation would be, um, you know, they might come back and say, between Litchfield and Dyser, we recommend an eight-foot wall. That's an actual recommendation at X million dollars. Uh, instead, what they're going to do is create, it's, it's a table format, so it's based on, uh, if, if your noise is in this level a range, here are four, five, six options that will decrease the noise and the vibration and at a rough order magnitude cost of X dollars per, whether it's pavement replacement or wall per linear foot, per square foot. So what they're going to do is provide these, uh, these abatement items and a rough order magnitude cost instead of saying site-specific locations of, in that way, they, they will never, they, they, they're not quite providing a recommendation as a solution. And also on the flip side, identifying that there actually is a very specific problem like with truck traffic causing the issue. So that's their way of being kind of a neutral party is providing these, uh, high-level solutions.
Another question was, you mentioned this accident. I thought you said that they resulted in damage in a contractor's yard? Where, where would that have been?
So the vehicle, from my understanding, um, talking to officers and, uh, Aiken Garner, coming southbound at between sixty and seventy miles an hour. And they hit the, the first curved median, they, they went straight and that turned their car sideways where their undercarriage clipped our Gabian walls on the east side, further deflecting them at kind of a southeast angle over the curb, over the sidewalk, through, uh, hit one palm tree. One palm tree is kind of like a ten-degree and then went sliding through the contractor, uh, fence on its, on its back. And the engine was over here. So it was not hardscape damage, it was, uh, tree and kind of a big rut.
Okay, thank you.
The tr- the, the temporary fence has looked better as well.
Keith, is the, um, design at Camelback Park Parking Lot still similar to what Woody put together?
Uh, Councilman Doherty, yes, it is. Uh, we have went back and, uh, reviewed the, uh, so that was a, a two-D picture on, uh, an aerial and after survey has been complete, the consultant overlated on a scaled survey, a document, and as Matthew kind of alluded to, um, after we potholed where the airline canal is, which everybody knows where the pony wall is, it's about three feet south of there, which is right down the middle of where the parking lot that Woody designed was. So we can't have, uh, they're not, it's not a load-bearing pipe. It was a cast-in-place, I believe, in the fifties or sixties, which I, I always look at cast-in-place as like a eggshell. So we can't put loading on it, so we have to pull the parking lot a little further south and a little bit to the west. So generally, in the same alignment, but just off the pipe.
So we'll just landscape over the can- canal basically or some?
The pipe would just be kind of no man's land for, uh, loading, but we might do something, um, we're talking to Public Works, uh, a lot of ideas, we can just extend the turf.
Decorative, yeah. Okay, cool.
Finally, you've done this, takes into place, into account moving that pony wall north.
Yeah, it does, yes. It, it, replacing the pony wall, moving it north with the new perimeter wall defense. The, the damage, uh, the, 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 it was a service line that was a old galvanized line that popped on the twenty-second of Novem- of, of September. Um, they dug down, they found it, the Liberty came out and I think they exercised somewhere between fifteen and twenty valves in the area and they were never able to isolate and turn the pressure off, so that thing never stopped leaking. So what their crews did is they went in with some material and wrapped the galvanized so that they could continue exercising valves throughout the city. Um, which if, uh, just south of Bird, they, they broke a valve, so they actually, we had to allow them to dig and put a new valve in because of all the exercising. So in the meantime, so we go over traffic, we had them backfill it with AB and put cold patch on until they could figure out where the valves to isolate the line is. I was told last Thursday that they found this, the magic valve that was causing us all the headaches. Um, and so that was, that's why they started, uh, re-excavating the cold patch on Monday and Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday, actually. Um, and now the, so they've dug down, they're replacing it all the way to the median, just to the north where the palm trees are, with copper line. Parking lot. The design of the parking lot as, uh, was conceptually generated by Woody is kind of over the pipes, we have to move the parking lot a little further south. And now that, that we're going to do the perimeter wall project at the same time, it goes to the right-of-way line further to north. So there should be a gap between the wall and the parking lot. And that's what we're trying to figure out what to do with. Now we have that opportunity to make it a walking track or put additional landscaping.
Other questions, comments? Matt, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Next item is before on special projects.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Council, good evening. A few updates on special projects. Most of them are in Litchfield Square. Uh, the underpass at Litchfield Road, uh, roughly at the Fairway Drive alignment, that underpass has been there for quite a while. We had some storm events over the last year or two that have had flooding down in the underpass, actually underneath Litchfield Road. Um, one of the, um, components of Litchfield Square was to build a sump pump. and connected in with some of the new drainage systems. Aiken Gardner, Councilmember, Brandon Watson mentioned, great partner for us. They have completed the sump pump. That facility is actually east of Litchfield Road, basically south of the golf cart path. And the sump pump has been tested three or four times. I've been on site for two or three of the testing. The system actually works. And what Aiken Gardner has done to demonstrate to the city and their subcontractors is brought in a water truck, dropped water down into the underpass to see if the system would actually work and it does. So it's good to see that that system is up and running and functional.
Is it the water, if you put the water on the west side, does it, on the east side actually get it eventually?
That is correct. Village Parkway, that's the new road connecting between Old Litchfield and Litchfield Road. We did conduct a final site inspection last week with Aiken Gardner and the subcontractors. There is a punch list that was being generated. There are some items, some cracked concrete, some landscape items that need to be cleaned up before we could, excuse me, before we can accept the roadway. So Aiken Gardner is working on a punch list that we will review internally and go back out and do a, another final inspection. Matthew had mentioned the, the one gap in Village Parkway is the section immediately south of the campus of the church at Litchfield Park. That project, that section roadway will start construction probably in November and should be completed in early twenty twenty four, hopefully by January. Matthew mentioned the mailbox, the church and Aiken Gardner, as well as myself, has been working with the postmaster. And they have authorized, the US Postal Service has authorized the relocation of the post office or the post box. So that'll be occurring here probably in the next few weeks to make, make room for the actual roadway improvements. On Honeysuckle, this is the roadway between Old Litchfield Road and La Loma, which is the street west of City Hall. I've talked previously, the temporary road closure that we had before Labor Day. The roadway has been open since before Labor Day weekend. There's some cleanup work that Aiken Gardner needs to finish up. I walked the site this evening before the meeting. I was hoping to see some street lights that will be new to Honeysuckle. Those are not quite in yet. I'm told by Aiken Gardner that the streetlight poles will be installed and the light fixtures themselves energized by APS by the end of this month. So hopefully the next week or two. We do work extensively between myself, Aiken Gardner and their subs in trying to work with the property owners and the tenants in coordination of all the activity. Recent work on the immediate northwest corner and southwest corner of Old Litchfield and Honeysuckle, the aprons, if you will, for the sidewalks that work, it's colored concrete. I just walked that again this evening. There are very large areas for pedestrians to gather. I saw people actually using it tonight as they were leaving dinner. So there's plenty of room. It's a safe environment for pedestrians. Matthew mentioned the ADA accessibility. So we have the ADA ramps on both the northwest and southwest corner. All of that work is complete. And so the pedestrian flow works really well through that area. The one component that's being worked on this week is, Aiken Gardner was, was working on it this morning, is they had to dig out the actual road bed for Old Litchfield Road right at the intersection with Honeysuckle. That work should be completed in the next week. There is a, we're back to another temporary road closure west of Old Litchfield Road, but that work should be done next week. I mentioned before, I think the last report last month, the section of Honeysuckle north of City Hall, the concrete work is done and the paving work, the first, what's called a lift was laid. They won't, Aiken Gardner will not put the final lift, if you will, or the final lament of, lay down of pavement until we're a little bit further along with construction. But you can see construction activity north of City Hall. So we're getting really close on getting Honeysuckle completed. Litchfield Square work, I mentioned before, preliminary grading and drainage work has pretty much been completed. It doesn't look like a lot if you go out there and take, take a look at the park because most of the work that's being done right now is some of the drainage work, which is underground. But the Aiken Gardner crews and their sub subcontractors, STL landscaping, they're putting in, preparing the park for initial landscape improvements, which would be turf. And later on the agenda tonight, we're going to be asking you to approve a commercial services agreement for, with Cox Communications so that we can have internet service for the future parks. So those are the updates on Litchfield Square. One thing I should mention, the three lots, the three single family lots that are but the north side of the square. There are three households. We are still working on rebuilding the wall. If you go out there and take a look, these are three lots, the three homes that are on Lucana. The wall is inconsistent and roughly anywhere from four to five feet. We're working to bring that forward with a new project where we would raise that wall and do a extension of the wall that was completed last year on Litchfield Road. It'd be a really nice looking wall, complete with stucco finish and paint that would match and tie in with the rest of the city. So we are working on that as, as part of this square. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Council? I see you must have a really complete report. Thank you.
All right, we're, we're trying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Interacted as information on magistrate board? If that, if you have any questions, I'm going to report to the city. Let's just keep the agenda on my page. Work discussion. Other items? Your motion to adopt the consent that I would be trying to. Number C, commercial services. Do you have a question?
Yes.
Start with this, Keith. You want to give us? I've been, now. I. Here, Steve.
Is it reasonable, Vice Mayor, as far as the internet speed or the cost or in general, I'm just? Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm trying to break that up in, in several different areas there. So we've been talking about this with Cox for quite some time. I know one question we've had about this one frequently was when we would start paying the thousand dollars a month. And we will not start paying the thousand dollars a month until it's actually needed, which will be the, when the park opens. So I just wanted to clarify that one. As far, it's for, it's for Litchfield Square, sir. It's, it's mainly for public wifi, yes, sir. Mainly so. A big user of that would be for the city's special events, which will be there now. That will be one of the main users of that because they need that for events. But people in the parks as well, so they can come up there on their laptops, et cetera, that sort of thing. As far as to break up the rest of, as far as the internet speed goes and so on and so forth. So we actually have someone here with Cox from us and, and John as well. So, John, you want to address this first, then we can refer to Cox for questions?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. So as Matthew said, we have been working on this for quite a while. And after Woody retired, then I, I picked up the contract and have been working with our city attorney. And Jamie is here from Cox. I'm, I'm not an expert on the MPS and things of that nature. I know in, in working with Matthew and with Gus Rosenfeld, we definitely did not want to start incurring what's referred to as a monthly recurring service charge. That's a thousand dollars a month until we actually need the service. So a component of the park is that on the, the northwest corner of Litchfield Square Park, basically what would be the corner of Village Parkway and Desert Avenue would be a restroom building for men's and women's restrooms. It would also have what's called a comm room or communications room. So inside the, the communications room would be the equipment that we would hook up into the fiber optic that is being installed as part of the Litchfield Square improvements. So that building will not come online until next year. And so a sticking point with the contract that we've had over the last couple of months, getting ready for the meeting tonight was that Jamie's associate has assured us that we would not start incurring that monthly fee until we actually need, once the building's open and as Matthew said, until we need the, the actual wifi service. And with that, I, I can turn it back over to, to Jamie and she can maybe address some of the technical side of things. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Mayor members of the council, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. My name's Jamie Boyett. I'm with Cox. And so as John mentioned, my counterpart, Melissa Duss, has been working with you guys. She's with our Cox business group. So I believe one gig is what we're looking to provide. But whenever you have, you know, congestion and stuff, that can sometimes bring down what the speed is. But we are looking to do one gig.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I can, it's Council McLaren. This thousand dollars for up to one gig of service just seems ridiculously high. I have service at my business that is comparable to this and pay less than half that amount with Cox.
And I'll have to, and I apologize, I'll have to get back to our Cox business folks. I'm excited. I deal mainly on the residential side, but unfortunately our Cox business rep is, is out of the country today. So I do know that the thousand dollars is the government rate that they usually charge for this type of service. So, but I can get back to them and, and get some additional information on the rate and, and get that over to, to Matt and John to get back to you guys.
I can tell you that my most recent rate is four thirty, four thirty-five, and that went up from three ninety-five. So that is the rate that, that we do in the commercial side. And we should get something similar to that.
And it's, I mean, and a lot of it is like depends upon, you know, where we're feeding to, how many customers. Like there's a lot of other things to go into what is, you know, why, why we charge the rates we do. But again, I will need to get back with my Cox business team to find out exactly what, why, why this is the cost for it.
Cox about difference between a thousand dollars. What was it? Four hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-five cents?
Four hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-five cents.
Four, four thirty-four, thirty-five. That's our goal. If the government ever got the same rate, it would be unbelievable. So we need to understand how the, how the pricing, why is the pricing varying?
So this question is probably Matthew or John. I mean, our only option in Litchfield is Cox, right? I mean, we don't have any other, we don't have Verizon, we don't have WiGuard, we don't have, I mean, where are we on, on all of that? Our, it's our only option. What's that?
There are other options.
There are other options.
There, there, there were other options at one point, I will say that. We've been working with Cox for a long time. That's part of the utilities in Litchfield Square as well for the conduit, et cetera. So that's, please don't feel like I'm convincing. It's, it's just, it's a little more complicated than that. But we'll be glad to send answers to this and on this, to council. And I would agree with the mayor. I would suggest that we bump this item to November and we'll certainly come back with more information at that time.
Can we, before you, before you table it, I, I have constant issues with internet in and out, off, on, and it affects everything in our household. And we're right across the street from all of this. So my question is, I've been told time and time and time and time again that the problem is we need to replace nodes and that they're, they're on the horizon coming soon. Do we have any idea when that's happening?
I don't, but I would definitely, I'll definitely look into that and get back to you.
Because that's, that's, I mean, reliability is a big issue.
Whoever comes to make the presentation, probably a good, a good idea to give them the warning that they have the good news of, for the most part, every resident uses Cox if they have high speed internet. It's, you know, Verizon's even worse than Cox, but that doesn't mean Cox is good. And every one of us has multiple times every day that our service goes down and it impacts our lives. So they're, they will be asking about questions like reliability of this service that we're going to pay two and a half times, which we're supposed to pay. So they're, they're going to be, they should be prepared to answer the questions.
Yeah. Mayor, members of the council, I can definitely take that on and I can come back next meeting to report on what we're doing in Litchfield Park and to see and, and report on any issues that our field and construction teams let me know what's going on.
Just to give you an example, our alarm system is disconnected every single night at the exact same time. And I get a, a notice on my phone, wakes me up, tells me that your alarm is now on, wife on my phone service instead. And then it comes back on most of the time, except for one Sunday morning when it wouldn't come back on. And we were stuck in the house in this church because the only way to go out was to set off the alarm and maybe get the police over at the house or the fire department at the house. So we literally were trapped inside our own home. We were a prisoner of Cox. So I, I know we're, we're not shooting the messenger. Please do not take it as shooting the messenger. But I would like to see some of these issues resolved before we commit the kind of money we're talking about.
Yeah. And Councilmember, I'll, I'll take that on myself to, to figure that step out. And I can come back to the meeting next month to provide reports on, on any service issues and what Cox's future plans are for the city. Thank you. You're welcome.
So moved. So moved.
Favorite piece, say aye. Be opposed? All right. So we'll look at it again at our next meeting. Now we go to item ten A, which is about to be worth just waiting. Vice Mayor has declared himself confident situation on this item. That's what we require to explain that to the court. Oh. Let me take a part in this discussion.
Mayor and council, I can just go over it. So you remember this was the first reading that was before you last month. The number changed somewhat. The reason why is because we changed what we're buying a little bit. Before it was just a straight line. Before, it was just a straight line as far as the right of way. We did add a little more on to that on the, basically on the corners of the sidewalk. And for that reason, the square footage changed from to ten thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine square feet. You may remember before it was gonna be one thirty-one, six twenty-five. Now it has changed to one thirty-four, six seventy-six. And the reason why is? Can you hear me now? You guys good? Okay, all right. Um, so because we're buying more square footage, the price did change about three thousand dollars, that's why. So that was a formula that was very simple. It was eight fifty per square foot. So that's why if you see the change, that the appraisal before was for one thirty-one. Again, it was because it was a little less square footage. But I just want to be clear, explain that to you, why that number changed, okay? We have met with the dentist, with Dr. Ellsworth and Dr. Warren to discuss this. They are clear on where we were looking to put the sidewalk. Just as a reminder, the reason that we're doing this is because the walking path that comes through here outside this building, eventually we'll make a hard left turn, a ninety-degree turn here and head west and then turn right across Wigwam. But we don't own that property today where that sidewalk is. We don't own the parallel spots. We don't own the sidewalk. We actually don't own the grass just north of the library here where we hold our city events. So this would be acquiring that property. Again, it's almost eleven thousand square feet of property. And also, this is a reminder, this is separate from the dental parking lease. The dental parking lease will be on next month's council agenda. But again, this is for a right-of-way purchase of almost eleven thousand square feet for a hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. Well.
Questions, Council? Does your motion to approve or not? Three of all. All right, item number D, adoption of order, just waiting. It looks like, it looks like this is only changing penalties.
Mayor, Council, that is correct. Last month, I brought forward the ordinance, just as an introduction, so it's really a pretty straightforward.
This is the adoption. We introduced it last time.
Correct.
So the question I have, the question I have is, the only thing we're doing here is changing penalties. Did this, what's that? Did staff also review the ordinance for the way it works to make sure it works in the way we want it to work?
Correct.
And it's consistent with what's being done across the valley?
Yes.
Okay. You have further presentation?
I do not.
Any questions, Council? Does your motion to adopt ordinance, please? Change penalties on group moving facility? Any discussion? Be opposed? I don't know. So is there? Does a favor, please say aye. Be opposed? We got a turn for almost, almost eight thirty-three.